I'm going to turn it over first to Mrs. Greszmer to talk a little bit about the award.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. We really appreciate the invitation. This is Isla Donahue and Isla's art was chosen for the state of Wisconsin for the Child's Creative Power Award. It's a very high award in the state of Wisconsin and only one other student in the entire state of Wisconsin gets awarded that. Isla and one other student, but it's really sad. Isla got fifty dollars? Her art is Madison? Not yet. It's coming.
Jack's in the mail.
Her art's in Madison and a framework that's being framed and then it will travel to state of Wisconsin for three years. And then she'll get her art back. This is Dylan. So Isla's art is a baby owl and I'm a owl. Do you want to see anything with her artwork? What would you like to say?
Um, my art is, um, just something that I wanted to do because I really like owls. And it inspired me to mix a lot of, a lot of colors. Make it so, um, that's what I did. The video on sale, I did the animal art.
Thank you, Isla. One time, a blonde and a beautiful brilliant fantasy monster. And Dylan won the Youth Creative Power Award for the state of Wisconsin. So there's one other child in the whole state that also won the Youth Creative Power Award. Dylan got fifty dollars. And he studied color theory and the judges loved his work with the rainbow colors, the tints, the shades, the primary colors, secondary colors. They just loved it. And his art is also as a framer in Madison and will travel the state for three years.
All right.
So Dylan will be like fifteen when he gets it back. Any questions, anybody? Dylan, you have any comments?
I want to make an interesting question.
Thank you.
All right. Great job. Thank you for your efforts and for your art and for bringing recognition to our school district. We really appreciate it and we appreciate you and wish you luck in your future artwork. All right?
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to speak art in Hudson. I appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Cindy has been an amazing contributor to the art program, a wonderful teacher, and one of her very special talents she brings is this exactly what she did tonight. She finds a way to recognize young artists and get their work known to a broader audience. We really appreciate all Cindy's done for the district.
All right. Well, thank you for bringing that forward. I always like to start these meetings out with recognitions and our second area under recognitions is the mayor making a presentation about the come forward. Rich O'Connell is the mayor of Hudson and we've had some discussion about this at the board it's starting to pick up steam, so I'm excited to hear how it's going there. Mayor.
Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, board members. First of all, I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight to discuss what I think is a very, very important initiative in our city. About a year ago, I had an opportunity to sit down with our now current director, former director at our library, Shelley Tugus. And we were having talks, talking about working in town and reflect the fact that incivility has really started to creep into our city here in our city. We know that given the political environment that it's happening throughout the country. But we're starting to see it here in our own community. It's pervasive and we need to try to stop it. So in my discussion with her, we were talking about getting back to some basics. And it occurred to me, I remember my first grade year. And when I sat down at my desk in first grade, there were three things in front of me. We had a tablet with lined paper so we could do our capital letters and we looked at lines in the middle so we could do our small letters. We had a pencil and we had a ruler, a twelve inch ruler. And that ruler had a golden ruler. We had to recite that golden rule every single day. It started with the pledge allegiance and then we recited the golden rule every day in my first grade year. Second grade year, same thing. Third grade year, same thing, same thing. After that, my memory faded. It should have been getting better as I got older, but it was fading. So I don't know exactly when that stopped, but I can tell you this, it had an impact on me. I remember to this day reciting the golden rule every single morning. I had an opportunity to, to talk to some third graders, so last fall, a couple of classes of third graders. And I asked them, this is a meeting, I asked them, raise your hand if you know what the golden rule is. Fewer than twenty-five percent of that class, part of that class knew what the golden rule was. If you would ask my first grade class that, in the first week of school, we knew what the golden rule was. Hundred percent, everybody would raise their hand. So in talking, in talking with Shelley, I told her I remembered this well. And I said, it would be great if we could try to get this back. Because there are some generations that have been skipped as far as being taught the golden rule. So we were trying to figure out what we could do with this and Shelley immediately went to bookmark. I don't know if rulers are the thing in school anymore. There's so many other tools I guess available. But bookmarks, everybody's got them. Everybody needs them. So we started to talk about that. Not long after that, I was having conversations with people in the community that were also very, very concerned about expressions of hate in our community. And they were asking me, what can you do about this? So in late September, early October, I made a statement at city council meeting, denouncing hate in our community. Denouncing expressions of hate in our community. Recognizing that they're not just coming from one side or the other, they're coming from everywhere. They're coming from all sides. And that day is when I announced the Golden Rule Initiative for the city of Hudson. Soon after that, I received an email from frontline. This book, The Golden Rule by Eileen Cooper. It's a great book. I highly recommend it to everybody. And hopefully, I know, I know that, well, hopefully, everybody will have a chance to read this book, have it read to them. I have been in a number of different situations where I have read this for the kids. This is probably second grade, you know, they're going to understand it, first graders might. It's a great book. It talks about a grandfather, his grandson in different situations where the golden rule should apply. The golden rule, is it, is it a religious thing? Well, yes and no. Is it intended to be religious or what purpose is what we're doing with the initiative? Not at all. Not at all. But every single, every single major religion, ancient and current, embraces a form of the golden rule in some iteration. And that is on the back of the, of the bookmark that I gave to you. Is it religious uniquely? No, it's not. It transcends religion. It comes, it came before Christianity, five hundred years before Christianity. It is in secular cultures. It's inherent in many of the Indian cultures, Native American cultures here in the United States. So when, when I announced this, we had to try to come up with a way that we were going to bring this out into the community. We made twenty thousand of these bookmarks. They had them printed. They're gone. Brought them to local businesses, brought them to various people, various organizations, and they're gone. We just reprinted twenty thousand more. We think it's important that this message gets out to our community and we really are trying to figure out the best way to do this. And there are a number, it's not just one way. Everybody's going to have their own ideas. And what we've done is we created a committee that is represented, that has representatives from all, almost all of the service organizations that we can find in the city. The only ones that are not represented are the ones that we haven't actually had a chance to talk to yet. Both Rotarys are part of the committee, Lions Club, Kiwanis Club, YMCA, Ministerial Alliance. And there are a few others, forgive me, I'm kind of purchasing all of them right now. But they are part of a committee where we are trying to get this message out to people in our community. It's time to bring civility back into our discourse. What saddens me most, what truly saddens me and probably was the genesis of this idea in the first place, was conversations I was having with friends who could no longer have conversations with their family. And I'm not talking extended family. I'm talking their kids. And I'm talking their brothers and sisters, their siblings, their mom and dad. They can't have any civil discourse. All of a sudden in today's society, if you disagree with one another, you have become permanent lifelong enemies. That's got to stop. It has to stop. So after the first of the year, on Martin Luther King Day, I declared 2021, the year of the golden rule. We kicked off our initiative with our committee, excuse me, with our committee. And we are doing a number of different things and getting this message out, reading this book to people. And by the way, anybody that wants me, I'll be there to read this book. Anywhere you want, I will go there. It's that important. So we are going to be, we're right now tossing ideas around for this summer, how we're going to get this into the community. We're probably going to have picnic, that type of thing. We looked at what the longer table did. That was very successful. I think it was a great idea. And, and events similar to that maybe, or try to do just neighborhood events throughout the city on the same day, similar to National Night Out perhaps. But we're talking about that right now. But in the meantime, I'm asking you to join me to help with the Golden Rule Initiative to get our message out to the city that we need once again to rekindle civil conversations. The only way we can understand one another is if we listen to one another. Really listen to one another and take the time to listen rather than argue. I'm asking that you appoint a representative to our committee. And I'm asking that you help me with the latest printing of our bookmark to teach our kids in school the golden rule. Thank you so much for your time tonight and I'm available. Questions, anybody?
Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead, Bruce.
Well, I just want to say thank you for coming tonight and thanks for the leadership. Because real leaders continue to repeat the message over and over. It's not as if I've heard you just say this once. I've seen it at a number of venues. So I appreciate that. I appreciate you continuing to be out and be bold. I bought the book. I read the book. It's fantastic. The message, yes, it's simple, but that's what this is all about, just treating others the way that you want to be treated. So thanks for the continued leadership and keeping a focus on Hudson and what we can continue to do, to do here as a great community.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
One thing, if I may add. Shelley and I, Shelley Tugus at the library and I had an opportunity, oh, a month ago, maybe, to interview the author of this book, Eileen Cooper. That is posted on the library website. For anybody that's interested, it was a great, very delightful conversation that we had. Great author, great woman, and we thanked her obviously for, for the book. She thanked us for the research and sales. So I'd say over a hundred of these books have already been bought here in Hudson. So again, thank you all so much and I hope that, that we can find that we can work together on this. We really would like to have the school district part of this initiative. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, next on our order of business is the citizens request to speak about non-agenda items. Is there anyone that wants to speak? We have people who are ready to speak on an agenda item, but I don't know that I saw in here. I was going through it. Went counted it twice. I didn't see anyone for non-agenda items. So with that, we'll see none. We'll go into topics and we're going to mix up the order a little bit. We're going to go into numbers five C and five D. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Ollett for the COVID-19 operational update and then the district's recommendation for mitigation strategies.
Absolutely. So just an update on some of our COVID situation that we have going on in the district. Right now, over the last two weeks, our numbers have started, you know, come back down compared to where they were a couple of weeks ago. We had experienced kind of our highest numbers we'd had in the district all year. And so the numbers, you know, numbers have come back down. And again, continuing, you know, to work with our staff, work with our, with our kids and our parents as we continue to try to manage the situation. We did have a vaccine. It wasn't really ours. We, we gave St. Craig County the opportunity to host or to utilize our facility for a vaccine clinic. That was, I believe, two weeks ago, two Thursdays ago. They had two hundred and sixty people that utilized the vaccine clinic. A hundred and thirty or so were our students that utilized it with parent permission. And so they are looking for additional vaccine clinics to have as from what we're hearing, and we had a county meeting today with St. Craig County Public Health and the county superintendents that the vaccine, the emergency authorized use will probably happen on Wednesday for twelve to sixteen year olds. And so after that, there'll be an opportunity if younger people want to get vaccinated as we, as we work through that. And then the other piece that we, that we have with it is as far as the operational update, we're continuing to, you know, kind of move along. A lot of the mitigation changes are things that we're going to have, I'm going to talk about in the next agenda item. And we'll, we'll continue to work through that. So any questions about the operational update or kind of where we're sitting numbers wise? We're sitting in a pretty good spot right now.
Any questions, Bruce?
Say, Dr. Nick, the vaccination clinic for the twelve to fifteen, are they going to have a separate location here or a request for that? Or is that going to be something that will be like the hospital?
They, they have asked if, if there are any districts that are willing to allow space for after hours type of clinics. I mean, one of the things they have when they try to do the mass vaccination clinics is they need a lot of space because people have to sit for fifteen minutes after the vaccine. And so sometimes our larger spaces bode well for that. And so, yeah, they have asked for spaces and we're kind of in talks with them that if they need to utilize one of our facilities again, you know, as being another public partner, we would allow that to happen.
And, and just to follow up on that, if the, for the second shot for those that came through, whatever it was, a week ago, are, are they then going to be back on site for that second shot?
Yep, yep. So there'll be the, the second shots to follow up. I think it's
The twentieth?
Yes, yep. So it's the Pfizer vaccine. That's the only vaccine that's been approved for under, under age eighteen. So.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? So as we work through the next item on the agenda, which is considerations for COVID mitigation strategies, I'll kind of talk you through what our, what our strategy or, or plan recommendations of the administration. So as we started off this year way back in July, well, actually in March of last year when the schools were closed, we started to look at, how do we deal with this? You know, this is not something that typically we, any of us have been versed in. It's not something we, we studied in school. And so we, we started to look at, there are a lot of decisions that needed to be made. And, you know, we had to have something to kind of help us guide that decisions. And so in the summer, you know, we made the, the back to school blueprint, but one of the things that we did right off the bat was to come up with what our guiding principles were. So as we make decisions, you know, we want to make decisions based on what our guiding principles were as we, as we worked through this, this process. And, you know, we felt it was important. We felt face-to-face school is important for our kids. We felt that activities are important for our kids. And that we also know it's our responsibility to mitigate the risk associated with, with COVID-19. But we can never guarantee a COVID-free environment. That's just not, that's just not an option. And if you remember, you know, last year, you know, we were, I think, the first district in the area to do face-to-face summer school and to give it a try. And then we made the commitment as a district to do face-to-face instruction right from the get-go on September first. And I think a lot of other districts followed our, followed our lead on that. You know, some of the districts, obviously to the west, didn't quite follow this, the same thing. But a lot of districts in Wisconsin, contrary to a popular belief, a lot of districts have been having face-to-face instruction. And so, you know, we went through this and, and we had to decide, okay, if we're going to offer this level of instruction, what are the different parameters? What are all the different decisions we need to make related to it, whether it be field trips, whether it be recess, whether it be, you know, water fountains, you know, there's just a ton of, a ton of, of different things that were out there, activities. And so that's where we created that back to school blueprint. And, you know, the board approved it back at the beginning of the year. It was back in August. And part of that back to school blueprint had also the school closure matrix. And one of the things I think we've prided ourselves on as a school district is we have been flexible and we've made adjustments as we need to make adjustments, you know, and, and there were, you know, we heard from both sides of, of the argument. You know, people that, that wanted things locked down very tight and people that wanted things very wide open. And, you know, and we tried to, what we tried to do is we tried to really find what we felt is a pragmatic approach. What's a reasonable approach is we continue to move through the process and we continue to move through the school year. And so, you know, we had made adjustments, you know, and sometimes people would say, well, you're, you're changing the matrix just to keep kids in school or you're changing this to do this. And what it is, as we continued to get more and more information, as we had longer and longer, we'd been in school, we felt like we were able to make different decisions and we were able to guide those decisions as we, as we move forward. And so, you know, it kind of brings us to where we're at right now, where we've, we've made some of these changes, whether it be the school closure matrix or back in April when, you know, we made the decision that we're going to be committed to face-to-face instruction to get through the, get through the end of the year. Or even, you know, the board made the decision on, on requiring masks before the governor came out with the mask mandate. I mean, if you remember, your back to school blueprint was actually passed before the governor's mandate. And so all of these things come into play. And as we've gone through this, you know, we started off the year with a lot of Plexiglas everywhere. And since then, we've kind of reduced some of those things as we've worked through it. We started off at the year having our staff, you know, wiping things down, you know, consistently multiple times throughout the day. We've made adjustments that way. You know, we've adjusted the schedule where we, you know, we went to an IDL model that gave, that gave people the option to remote into classrooms. And that was a model that actually was followed quite a bit by quite a few other districts. Some use Google Beats, some use Zoom and things along those lines. But, you know, we, we've, we've made adjustments. And then when we did that, you know, we did the three hour early releases on Wednesday and we, we try to, we try to balance the needs of our staff. We try to balance the needs of our kids. We try to balance the needs of our community. And there's a lot of competing interest and none of these decisions are ever made in a vacuum. And none of these decisions are ever made with an intention of typically, you know, intentionally trying to take people off. Contrary to how, you know, people may feel. And, and I think, you know, but we want to constantly make adjustments and do things that we think are within reason. And so, like I said, we've made adjustments to, to the school closure matrix and then we've kind of moved away from it. And now we've made the commitment to face-to-face instruction. Back in April, we said, you know, we want to continue to keep the mask indoors, but we removed the required mask outdoors. And then, you know, before you know it, you know, the state came and kind of followed that too. They didn't follow us. It just happened that we were there slightly before they were. And as we continue to, so now as we think about our next set of recommendations, we, you know, we're looking at what is the natural next, next step as we try to unwind some of these things. Because nobody in administration, and I believe at the board, thinks that these things need to carry on into perpetuity and, and people need to see there's a light at the end of the tunnel. And so as we, as we continue to work through these different things, we want to be reasonable and, and we want to be responsible about this. Knowing that no matter what we do, we'll have people that don't think we've gone far enough and we'll have people that think we've gone way too far. And, you know, that's just kind of the nature of the environment we're in right now. About a month ago, we changed our close contact ruling or description to within a three foot radius from a six foot radius. And we've done that for about forty days, I think. Is that about right? We've done about forty days. And we wanted to watch and see, okay, what kind of, you know, impact could that potentially have on the spread? And so it's been, we've been able to manage and, and it hasn't had a negative impact on, on the spread. And so, you know, now what we're seeing is, you know, moving into some of the next, what we think are reasonable or logical steps. And so I'm going to, I'm going to take these in two different, two different parts. So there's kind of the masking piece recommendation and then there's the close contact trace or the contact tracing recommendations. So the masking recommendation is that we, the administration recommends wearing masks to the end of the school year. And then, and then come June fourth, once the school year is over, then we'd move to optional masking and for summer activities. And, you know, to give it a try. And again, just, you know, let's see how things go and let's, let's kind of have this gradual release model. We would, you know, then we have the other part of the recommendation, which is contact tracing. And contact tracing, what we would, what we would look at doing is starting effective tomorrow would be that if both parties are in a mask, you know, so if we happen to have Johnny in third hour English that ends up testing positive and the, you know, in the past, the three students that kind of sat around him have had to go home as close contacts. What we, what we found over the course of the year is that there's a very, 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 very low chance of them actually testing positive around him when both, both of them are in masks. So we've had thousands of kids that have sent home as close contacts. We've had very few, if any, that have tested positive. Now, we've had a lot of close contacts test positive that are close contact because, you know, maybe they're at sleepovers or maybe their parents have it, or maybe they're carpooling or, or things outside of, outside of those, those different components. And so.
Please, you'll, you'll get opportunity, people that have submitted forms will have an opportunity to speak if you've submitted a form. All right. Well.
So, so what the recommendation would be is that if both parties are in a mask and their only, in their only contact was the fact that they were both in school together, is that no longer would be, we'd be expecting those folks to quarantine. And again, it's just based on, we, you know, we're eight, nine months into this and we can look at our own data and we can say, okay, we think this is a reasonable step. You're going to have people that are going to say, it's not reasonable. CDC hasn't made that change. And you have other people say, it's not going far enough. But we think it's a reasonable step to take. And it will, you know, essentially for most of our kids that have to go home and quarantine, as it relates to close contacts, it would eliminate a lot of those. So kids, you know, are, are in the buildings and continue to work that way. And then any students that are currently out as close contact related to school, because maybe it happened today, maybe it happened Friday, whenever it was, they'd be allowed to return tomorrow, you know, if they're, you know, without symptoms and, and their only contact was through a school setting. So that, that's our, that's our recommendation. And I know that we're going to open it up for public comments, not necessarily public questions, but public comments before the board's going to have the discussion. But I just wanted to make sure, you know, we kind of talked through, this is a kind of a continuum as we kind of continue to work through this stuff. And that, again, it's, we're well aware that there are going to be people on, on each side of the issue that are either going to be not happy or happy. And, and, and that's just kind of the world that we live in right now. So without any further ado, President Johnson, I'll turn it over to you for the public comment portion.
All right. And so just to be clear and to repeat that for agenda items, for non-agenda items, we ask you to fill out a form before we get to that point in the meeting. And then once we get past that point, then it would be only discussion that would relate to an agenda item. The policy, board policy says the chair has discretion on the length of the comments. And under the policy, if we have fewer than five, in past history has been when we've had fewer than five, people asked to speak on any item that we would allow up to three minutes. And we have fifteen requests to speak. And again, this is for folks who are members of the school district, that is residents of Hudson School District. And so we had fifteen people fill these out. So what we'll do is we'll go to sixty seconds for each person to speak. And then hopefully we'll be able to get through those. Do we have everyone, everyone has submitted? You don't have any more forms? Okay. So first up, I would have Kristen Emerson. It's Kristen Emerson here from nine eighteen Green Street here in Hudson. I'll have our vice president be the timer, and... Quarter o'clock?
I know.
I've got it up for one minute, so, all right, you can, you can go ahead.
Hi, I'm a, I'm a parent of a student at the high school here. I am submitting a petition on behalf of over 250 people who have signed with kids in the district. I'm just gonna read it to you. Says, "Dear Hudson School Board Members and Administration, this petition asks you to continue mask usage in all grades in the Hudson School District until the CDC or Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, Wisconsin Department of Health Services changes or relaxes the guidelines. Masks have been proven by scientists to help reduce the rates of transmission of COVID-19 between people. We believe mask usage, distancing, and hand washing are our best options for our students until we have a large portion of the population vaccinated. Thank you for your continued support in keeping all students, staff, and local community members safe, and I thank you for taking my comments." Who should I give this to?
Give it to our secretary, please.
All right.
Thank you very much. And I'll just, and I failed to say one other thing. Okay. One thing I failed to say was that prior to tonight's meeting, I know that I personally received dozens, I'll say, of emails on both sides of this issue, and read them all, and so I would, you know, if people choose to use their 60 seconds to repeat things in the emails that all board members have read, that's up to you, how you choose to use your 60 seconds. But we've got one down, 14 to go, and next up is Fred Young. Okay. And Mr. Young, I won't butcher the name of the street, you go ahead and pronounce it.
Awatuki Trail.
Okay, Awatuki, got it.
All right. Members of the board, Dr. Letz, Superintendent, thank you for both your service and your time. By way of background, I'm an attorney of 15 years, I have three kids in the district, one kid still in daycare, about to open and enroll into the district. We, by way of background, I suppose, grew up in a home with a mother who is a teacher of 48 years, my father served on a school board for a couple of decades, and I think our dinner, dinner table conversations probably sounded a touch different. I would just encourage the board to consider that the rubric has changed entirely, given that vaccine is available for any adult, and Wisconsin Department of Health has still recorded zero deaths for anyone under the age of 20. With those facts in mind, we ask that the board perhaps consider this with a little bit more urgency, and I know our family has decided to apply to a different school and has been accepted. We will be taking our children out of the district should mask-wearing be continued. Thank you.
Next, next up, we have Rachel McCartell, 420 Orange Street.
I apologize for reading fast, I would like all of my words to be heard tonight as I prepared a statement. Follow the science, listen to the experts, do it to protect others. We have heard these three things on repeat for over a year now. I have questioned this narrative and the manner in which we are blindly supposed to follow from the beginning. One, science is never settled, and I'd like to remind you that just like politicians, science can be bought. Two, many of the experts we are supposed to listen to have conflicts of interest, and anyone who goes against their narrative is immediately silenced. I believe all sides should be equally presented and not censored. Three, why are we following a one-size-fits-all approach? When it comes to healthcare of my loved ones, I want it individualized. Do it for others and not you phrase could be said for many lifestyle choices, like diet and exercise, but I don't see that being pushed as hard as masks. I've watched neighbors turn on each other. I see children living in constant state of anxiety. I've seen the leaders of our country, all the way down to the leaders of our communities, pick and choose when and which rules they choose to follow. Our children have had no say. The parents have had no say. We are not privileged enough to pick and choose. If anything, we are publicly shamed for trying to do what is right for our children. It is time for all parents to say enough is enough and to start taking their decisions back into their hands. Body autonomy is our right, informed consent is our right, a public education is our right. I ask that this board please make masks optional, put the hands, the power back into the parents where it belongs, unmask our children.
Next up is Chris Gruber of 571 German Court.
Hello, thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate the two students that presented up here bravely that are our projects, so congratulations to them for being a part of that. Secondly, I wanted to also note to the mayor, very, look forward to looking forward to the golden, golden rule. I hope that will mean we won't, we'll not see vandalism on Trump signs. And then, as far as masks, I had a lot written, but I only got 60 seconds, and I've already wasted probably 20 of them. So, I just wanted to say, you know, I learned scientific method, which is observation, hypothesis, prediction, results, over and over again, right? Einstein had Hitler, Hitler brought 100 scientists to say that Einstein was wrong to get consensus. You only need one person, that's what Einstein said. The science does not agree with masks. There's a CDC study with 14 randomized controlled trials on masks that say they do not, masks do not pose a substantial effect on transmission of laboratory-confirmed influenza. So, the science is not there, please unmask our kids.
Thank you, Elise Malter.
Hi, thank you for letting us speak today, even though it's 60 seconds. All right, so, I just wanted to say germs are nothing new in school. Teachers knew this when they took this profession. Kids and parents knew this when they put their kids in public school. When you're in public, germs are always gonna be a risk, sickness is always gonna be a part of life. We're here to say, make the mask optional. If someone feels more comfortable wearing a mask, great, let them do that. If they don't, don't force them. We have, our state is wonderful, we have three exemptions to vaccines because we respect people's bodies, respect their choices for themselves, same should be for the mask. There should be three exemptions for the mask, the same as there are for vaccines. People should not be forced to do anything, especially children.
Next up, I have Melissa Squires. And Ms. Squires, I was just, just wondering, is, is that address, are you a New Richmond resident?
Correct. I know what happens here will prob, will transcend to New Richmond, so I feel like Hudson...
Yeah, I'm sorry, but to be fair to our residents of our school district, we open up the comments to Hudson residents, all right?
Wonderful, thank you.
Yep. So, that takes the next three months, so, moving on, Beth Weiskopf.
Sure. Before I start, can I hand out real quick something to all of you?
Sure.
That includes what I'm saying tonight and some backup information, and my name's Beth Weiskopf. I also started a position, petition to unmask our kids, and we have over 523 signatures of people that agree with that. I'm not here suggesting to ban masks, I'm here to tell you to make masks optional. There are over 45 schools or districts in Wisconsin that have done the exact same thing in the last couple of weeks. No government, CDC, state, or local health departments, school unions, school boards, superintendent, principals, or teachers are in charge of my children's health. We, as parents, are the only ones that are in charge of their health. We have constitutional rights to make the decision for our children. No one but us are in charge of our children's health, and I'd just like it on record that you denied my religious exemption for my children, which is totally unconstitutional. I would like to remind the board that you have taken an oath of office to support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Wisconsin. The district does not have a board-approved, approved policy to require masks, therefore unconstitutional. And this was relied by the district superintendent and the student services, Erin Shildgren. The statutory duties that you are relying on, Wisconsin statute 118 speaks of the duties that are broad, but they cannot go against our constitutional rights. Everything else, I think my time is up, is in that handout, and I've emailed you all. Please unmask our children.
Then Sarah Backland of 573 Omaha Road.
Hi, I wasn't aware of your, your out-of-district rules for tonight, so I'm gonna pass it off to someone who's in district.
Okay.
Okay. And I wrote, I signed up, I'm Michelle Dennison in 600...
Oh, Michelle Dennison, okay.
Yes.
Yes, I have you, Michelle, all right?
Okay, and I'd just like to say, you have no ground, no more grounds to mask our kids. We'll never have a completely COVID-free environment, as stated already by Nick. A side note, that the vaccines are not FDA-approved, you're injecting your body and our children's body with an experimental gene therapy. We don't yet know the side effects that this will have. Close contacts, just because a child tests positive doesn't mean a whole lot. If someone doesn't exhibit symptoms, they don't transmit. You all took an oath of office to uphold the United States and state constitution. I'm asking you tonight to honor that oath that you took. You can do that by making masks optional to represent all people. Thank you.
Thank you. Rico Heisler, 1404 Second Street.
Many of us in this school district are Christians, and we believe that humans are made in the image of God, having bodies that are both spiritual and physical, both elements intertwined and inseparable. This image of the divine, which serves as the foundation of human dignity and identity, most clearly and intimately manifests itself physically in our faces, the best image we can share. When we want someone to know who we are, is that of our face. For 16 years, I've worked as a high school drama and director and choreographer in the district. I've seen many kids find belonging and direction for their lives because of the experiences and connections they make when they are allowed and encouraged to see and to be seen. When we force children to cover their faces, we force much of their identity into hiding, and we take from them a natural and essential tool for communicating not only who they are, but what they wish to say to others, and what they need others to know about them. Many kids, especially younger kids, are unable to adequately express themselves in words. They depend on those watching over them to be able to see their faces, to read their emotions, to know how to care for and help them when they are scared, upset, hurt, or when they wish to express joy, laughter, and amusement. Relationships that would normally serve as a lifeline when our nations and communities are in turmoil are being prohibited from even developing. Mandatory masking teaches our kids to see everybody as carriers of disease who need to be covered up, instead of individuals in need of personal contact and care. Our faces are inextricably linked to our identity, and to force that part of identity into hiding, indeed, to punish the unveiling of that identity with detention or isolated learning at home is wrong, and not a path to be taken by anyone concerned with the health of our children.
So, Jim Dennison is next.
You swore an oath to the Constitution. Your constituents are talking to you in numbers, 200, 500. I wasn't a genius at math in my day, but that's pretty simple math. Come out from behind your masks, because it's the masks of anarchy. Stop what you're doing and let these kids have a normal life like you had. Nobody put a scarf around your face from your kids when we had the flu every year. Where were you when we had H1N1 West Nile virus, the bird flu several years ago? All the kids had it like the rest of us. What did you do then? So, to everybody else, I'll say again, I'm gonna repeat like I did to the city council earlier this year, from the mask of anarchy. Take off your masks and breathe, rise like lions after slumber in unvanquishable number. Shake your chains to earth like dew, which in sleep had fallen on you. For we are many, and they are few.
Angela Boese, 870 Wildwood Lane.
Who wants to go after that? I just want to say, I realize that everyone has a lot of passion on this topic, so I recognize that. But I also want to tell you that I've got a couple of kids in the Hudson School District, some in daycare on the way as well, and I'd like to ask to continue this till the end of the school year, where we can make decisions with fewer kids in school, trial things, test them out, and then hopefully next year, we can go unmasked or choice masked. And that's all I'm asking, I'll give up the rest of my time since other people are going over. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, then Shelley Vance is the last one, I can't tell what community, are you from Hudson then? Okay.
I live downtown, just make this super quick, I have two kiddos, a 4K, and a fifth grader. We kept them home this year because I didn't, wasn't comfortable with them masking. We plan on keeping them home again next year if masks are mandated, so just asking that make it optional, so my kids can go to school, they miss their friends, and I want them to have normal, normal childhood. So, thank you, thanks for letting us speak, appreciate it.
Thank you. No, we have, that ends the public comments that, that were submitted, and we've had the presentation with the recommendation from the board, from the, I'm sorry, administration, now we have board comments, and I would also entertain a motion at this time.
Yeah, I move to approve the recommendation brought forward by administration to finish out the year with masks and to move to optional at the, at the start of the summer school year.
All right, and the, to be specific, the recommendation specifically stated starting Friday, June 4th, and, and no...
I'll accept a friendly amendment there, James.
All right, well, we'll just, we'll, we'll put that placeholder in, but if we change that date in as a result of the discussion, we'll just need an amendment. But we have a motion, is there a second?
No. Second?
All right, we have a motion, a second, so now it's open for discussion. Anyone want to speak to this?
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I wonder about the start date. I think that there was a concern raised about, there is, there are two proms, and one is on Friday, and so if we wouldn't want to move that start date possibly to the following Monday, just to make it clear that the same rules will apply to both proms.
Okay. All right. Do you want, do you want to have...
Sorry.
All right, do you, do you want to, is it, is that a formal motion to amend to June 7, then, the start of optional masks?
Is this not working? There we go, yep, yep. So, I would offer an amendment, a friendly amendment, Bruce, to move that to Monday, June 7?
How's that friendly?
All right, well, I'll take a member of Oakland's suggestion for an amendment, is there a second to the amendment, to move it from June 4 to June 7? Carrie, you second?
I'm not, I'm not seconding, I would like to ask a question.
Sure.
That would certainly be something I would consider, we could also consider masking through June 3rd school date, and having that lifted by the evening of that first prom. That's not something I'm bound to, but I would like to discuss rather than, discuss either moving it till, what is it, Thursday night, or till Monday morning, for summer school.
And we do have a primary motion, so all discussion is, is fair at this point, so...
Okay.
You made a point to, instead of moving it back, move it up to 5:00 PM on June 3rd.
Just so that the kids attending prom have an equal opportunity, which, moving it to Monday would also be having an equal opportunity.
Exactly, yep, I see your point, and I see Heather's point. Yes, Molly?
The only concern I have with that is that parents have purchased tickets based on the idea that their kids are wearing masks. So, I would say, at this point, I have heard from a parent that they are, don't want to send their kids to the prom without wearing masks. So, I think a logical cutoff would be that Monday. So I think a logical cutoff would be that Monday.
Okay. So if we can please have order. We had the public comment portion. That portion is now over. All right. We're going to, we have board discussion now at this point. Yes.
I agree with Carrie. I feel like prom is a really special time. If we're going to offer one with masks, one without, it's not fair. And prom is optional. So if there's a parent that really feels strongly about that, they can either not send them or they can wear a mask. They're optional.
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce?
So, I mean, just because we make choices here and choose to do things differently, there are still sports that are going on, right? So like state track, for instance, is like mid-June. So if a kid ends up getting, you know, positive tests, they can participate in those sports. So, you know, there are other actions that are happening here that we don't have any control of. We don't have any control over the WIAA. We don't have any control over what happens at, at some of the sectional, you know, levels. So I think we just need to make sure that we're understanding that, yes, we have choices that we can make here at a local level. But there are some choices that we don't have as much control over for what happens and the participation for our kids.
Okay. Other discussion regarding any aspect of the recommendations that relate to both masking and contact tracing?
I just, I would, I would point out that, and I appreciate Bruce, you bringing up the, the down-the-road potential implications of, of a large gathering of kids, kids without masks. I want to, I want to point out, just by having prom, we already are being much more lenient than any of the state or local recommendations. I mean, by, by having an indoor event like prom, you know, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of young people together. And I think, I definitely wouldn't want to have two separate sets of rules. So I would agree that either we have a masked prom or an unmasked prom. But I, I do think that it would be nice to have everyone have an opportunity to go to a prom that they felt like was safe. And if it sounds like there are some parents and kids that won't feel safe at a prom when people are not wearing masks, I would lean toward sticking with the original plan and moving that date to Monday.
Do, okay. Do we have a motion to amend then at this time?
Yep, I would move to amend that that date be changed to Monday, the 7th. Is that Monday?
All right. There's, there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? All right, we have a second. Any further discussion on the motion to amend the date, the start date from June 4th, which I presume was intended to be in the morning? I guess we didn't have a specific time in the recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, we just, we just set it up as it's, it was the day after the last day of school, you know? So it wasn't, there wasn't a specific time associated with it.
Okay.
Can I speak, Mr. President?
Yes. Kate.
I would be really inclined to continue it at June 4th. I think we're already, we have a lot of people here who are really passionate, and I think it's really exciting that so many people want to be involved. And I think that people have been more than reasonable in waiting, and I am hearing that people have had enough. And kids deserve to go to prom and have fun. I really don't want to see two proms that are masked. Perhaps they do one of the proms masked, one of them not, but I, I can't agree with that.
Razor, further discussion on this issue of the, the date, the start date for making masks optional? Okay. Right. I, I think that if I can weigh in, I, I guess if we have folks who want to attend prom without masks and we want others who want to definitely go to prom with masks, as Molly pointed out, that maybe bought their tickets, assuming that the mask policy would continue, which is what we did last July when we passed it. We said it would continue until further notice. But as all aspects of our COVID-19 mitigation strategies have changed throughout the year, our matrix changed during the year to fit the situations. I'm, I'm thinking I might actually be in favor of keeping it for June 4th, but make it very specific that it would start at 8:00 AM. And then, but I, but I would caution that, and I would ask, I don't see our high school principal here, but maybe Nick can address this. Would it be possible to shift folks who want to be able to attend without mask to Friday night, and then those who want to attend to the Thursday, and then those who, just so that they know that one is masked and one is not? Is that possible?
I think, you know, I, I think the, the challenge with that is going to be, so we've purposely set two proms so that we got their numbers down for those events. And so if you have a majority of people that take one or the other side of the, of the argument, regardless, what ends up happening is then all of a sudden you have extremely lopsided events, you know, regardless of which side of it. And so, you know. So I guess what I would tell you is, I would say, pick one or the other is probably going to be the easier way to go. You know, if, if you want to keep masks through the end of the day on the 4th, that's fine. If you want to have it be over at, you know, at the end of the school day on the 3rd, you know, that's fine. I think, you know, when we originally looked at this, prom didn't, this is 100% my fault. I didn't, I didn't put prom on the radar as far as when we picked that date. You know, and I, I will take the blame on that one and the angst that this has caused because I forgot that they were kind of split over those two days. So, you know, my recommendation would be to kind of pick one or the other, you know? Just because I think it's going to be kind of hard to, I mean, we can always shift kids. That's not the end of the world, but I think it's more of the, if all of a sudden you end up, regardless of which one is which, with 300 at one and 20 at the other, you know, it starts to become kind of counterproductive to what we're trying to, what we're trying to do to give some level of normalcy to kids. So that, that would be my feedback on it.
Okay. Any further comments then on this issue? Otherwise, we have now a motion for an amendment to begin the start date. I'm assuming 8:00 AM or 7:00 AM on Monday, June 7. That's a motion that has a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. You're going to have to do a roll call vote.
All right. We'll go with a roll call vote. All right. Thank you. Bowman?
Aye.
Garza?
Nay.
Hanson?
Aye.
Logland?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Johnson? Aye. The ayes have it. And the motion is to amend. Now we go back to the primary motion, that is to adopt the recommendations with the one change now being, instead of starting Friday, June 4th, it starts Monday, June 7. Is any other discussion regarding this?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I do think we have a vocal group here, and I appreciate that you all took time to be here. I, I do think, especially for those watching, and for this group to know, I mean, two to one on duplicated contacts prior to this meeting from folks supporting the continued mask through the end of the year. Two to one. Your, your- The petition that was presented by the folks who are in the audience right now still has signers in Florida and Ohio. The petition that was presented from those who supported the mask mandate, they cleaned their list, and it was all Hudson residents. So I wouldn't want the vocal nature of this room to make folks think that there's overwhelming support to remove masks.
All right. All right. Okay, I'm going to ask one more time, please, to restrict your comments from the crowd. You've had your opportunity to speak, and board members have the floor now. All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So when I'm looking at this, I'm looking at us being very flexible from the start, providing full face-to-face elementary education for the entire year, which not many other districts did that. I think we're, we're moving within three weeks to mask optional. The reasons I have for going to the end of the school year are, I believe it'd be difficult for teachers to control if it is optional. I believe there would be some bullying between students from both sides, wearing masks and not wearing masks. It's a good cutoff point. There'd be less kids in the schools in the summer, more area, more opportunity for spacing. I think our community is very happy with how we have handled the COVID situation in our schools and the ability to keep face-to-face. I know that there is a, I saw a post today encouraging people to come here from other districts because Hudson School District could set the template for other schools. It is not our job to set a template for anyone but our voters and our community. Leave it at that.
Any other discussion on, on this motion? Yes. Kate, all right.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that I think it was a good compromise to look at the end of the year. Prom just really gets me, and I can't, that's when I can't compromise. Obviously, I'm outnumbered, but I, I just find prom to be really important. And when you wear a mask, you could certainly have that as optional. I mean, I know that I'm outnumbered, but I want it to be known. Prom is optional, and if you wear a mask while you're at prom, say, other kids aren't wearing a mask, then you should be covered.
Any other discussion?
I have a, I have a daughter that graduated last year. She did not have a graduation. She did not have a prom. She did not have a senior party. And I think this is a, a good compromise, and it's, I'm comfortable with it. I wish my daughter had the opportunities that the seniors this year have. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll bring it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to adopt the administration's COVID mitigation plan, which is for the remainder of the school year and then into the new school year where masks become optional as of June 7? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Next agenda item, will we go back to consent agenda? Is there a motion with the wording regarding the expenditures?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,8,437.96.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Do we have any recognitions out of there, Andrea, on terms of the personnel packet? All right, very good. End of year activities?
Yep, that's me. So just wanted to kind of give you guys all a heads up and keep some reminders out there. The last day of school for students is Thursday, June 3rd. The last day of school for seniors is Friday, May 25th. Our last day for teachers will be Friday, June 4th. So graduation, I'm not sure which board members are planning on attending. It is on Saturday, May 29th. We will be hosting graduation outside in the stadium, weather permitting. Probably need to make the call on that a day or so ahead of time. You know, if it looks like it's going to be too difficult because of rain or too difficult because of wind, we'll move it inside so that we give people enough time. We don't want to make, wait till the day of and then have people have to change plans on that. So it'll be 11:00 AM in the stadium. If we have to do an alternate because of weather, it would be at, students with the last name A through K, which is essentially half of the alphabet, would be at 11:00 AM. And students with the last name L through Z would be at 2:00 PM and be an indoor ceremony in, in the east gym. Staff recognition banquet, Andrea, I think has sent invites to everybody, is that right?
Yes, if the board members haven't received one, let me know, and I will send you one.
So we have our staff recognition banquet. That's going to be on Wednesday, June 2nd. That starts at 6 o'clock. Be a welcome. And then this is recognizing our staff as it, as it relates to years of service, as it relates to retirees. We also invited staff members that, we didn't have a recognition banquet last year to- For those that weren't able to come last year, because we weren't able to have one last year, we've invited them to be celebrated this year. So we'll have our, I think it's 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, all the way up to 40 years.
10 up to 45 years.
45 years. So our longest-serving district employee, we recognize this year at 45 years of service. And so, and then also our retirees. And so that's, I think, is a great opportunity. If you haven't had an opportunity, you know, if you don't have a plan, it's on Wednesday, like I said, June 2nd. It'll be at the high school in the, in the forum area. RSVP, I think Andrea's department, is that right?
Send it to Amanda, and it's going to be very different than prior years. So it'll be exciting.
Yeah. So we'll, what's that?
That was unlike in prior years?
Well, last year, that's, that's very true. No, all years are exciting. This one will just have a little bit more excitement, yes.
Yes. And so, again, just, the sooner, the better as far as RSVP for that. So that's kind of the summary. Any other activities? I mean, there are 5th grade fairly wells, 8th grade fairly wells. There are, you know, I think Track and Field Day at the upper elementaries. Those are, you know, coming up and, and things along those lines. But these are really kind of the large district events that are kind of a district-wide type of, type of thing. So any questions or anything about end-of-year activities? Okay.
Is there any kind of a vote that we need?
Nope.
Board, all right. Very good. Moving on then to 21, 22 Board of Education meeting schedule. We saw this draft earlier, and note, while it does include June of '22, that's always subject to change because we have the, we always approve the calendar on an annual basis.
Yep. So this meeting schedule's been, you know, everybody had an opportunity to take a look at it. So we are, administration's recommendation is that you would approve the meeting schedule for the, essentially, starting in June for the next 12 to 13 months.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the Board of Education meeting schedule for the 21, 22 school year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the calendar is approved. So 21, 22 support staff compensation. Turn it over to Andrea.
Okay, so with respect to the recommendation, it's, as we talked about at the boardwork session, that we're recommending for support staff to have a 2% increase for the 21, 22 fiscal year. A variety of reasons, primarily, although we're not seeing settlements yet for the 21, 22 school year for the comparable districts, we are seeing that it's increasingly difficult to find staff. We have multiple positions, especially special ed pair of positions, that haven't been filled most of the year. So we have to be competitive. We have to try to get people in the door, and I would not want to fall behind. Our plan is always to issue letters of intent for support staff employees prior to the end of the school year, which, before they leave school year, then they have that next letter for the fall. And that's why at this point, we're recommending the 2% recommendation for support staff.
Any questions? Andrea. Again, this was discussed at our last work session, understanding the need for competition. Do I have a motion to approve the administration's recommendation? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bruce, second by Carrie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Last on our open meeting agenda is the mission, vision, and values. Again, this has been before the board, probably- Again, this has been before the board probably a half dozen times over the last 18 months when this process started nearly two years ago. So is there further questions? Otherwise, has there been any change since this was last discussed at the board level?
No, there's been, there's been no changes to it. You know, this has been a culmination of work that started back in 2019. There's been focus groups, there's been surveys, there's been all kinds of different feedback to, this will essentially supplant HSD 2025. And so it was a great project that was done in the district, I think way back in, Dave, 2007 and '08, is that somewhere around there? And so this is kind of that next, that next step. And so administration's recommendation would be to approve the new mission, vision, and values statements for Hudson School District.
Is there a motion to that regard?
So moved.
Motion by Carrie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Baumann, all right. Any further discussion regarding the Hudson School District mission statement, the vision statement, or the values? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the administration's work in this regard, which included work by a consultant and substantial community input, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion passes. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session. We have two bases for which to go into closed session, so please mention both in the motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to convene enclosed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 parent one parent C to consider the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the board has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and B pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 parent one parent E to consider competitive bargaining with the certified union for the 21, 2021, 2022 school year.
Right, is there a second? Second by Member Whitaker, calls for a roll call vote. Baumann?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Logland?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. The ayes have it. We are now adjourned into closed session, which will take place, presumably in the library.
Yeah, we'll be over in the media center.
All right, media center, thank you.